If you would come to the order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance. You apply.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Move approval, the Journal of Meeting of March 29, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I just have a motion carries. No better help than communications.
Mr. Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Item number one, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Receive file, county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, Third District.
Receive file and refer to the county councilor, to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number four, Fourth District.
Receive file, county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, that will be the order.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive file and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, to the Department of Planning, and to the county councilor.
So ordered.
Item number six, Seventh District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I just have a motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive file, county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, same motion through item number nine, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, Third District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11.
Same motion through item number 12, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, Fourth District.
Receive file, county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Florence, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, Second District.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Add-ons.
Item number one, Fifth District.
All right. Receive file, county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number two.
Receive file, matter be held in the order of business, refer to the council as a committee at the whole, and that will be the order. County Executive?
I have nothing further to report this evening.
I know we put a special committee, it's moved to public forum.
We have nine speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes, please.
First speaker is Willie Mae Harris.
Mr. Stanger, I came here personally to ask you a question. I'm having trouble with Mr. Ted Haskins, my mayor. He threatened me, and he put me out the council meeting last night, so I need to know who to go to and to report it to.
Peter Crane, may I answer that question, Mike?
I'd be happy, Mr. Chairman, to speak with this woman after the meeting.
Did you have something in writing that you can address to Mr. Crane?
Have I got something in writing?
Yep.
No, I tried to report it to the Burke Police Department, and they said they would make note of it, but they didn't do anything. And he just keeps threatening me, and last night I went to the meeting to ask him why do he keep threatening me, and he didn't even take a vote to put me out, he just put me out.
Okay, well, see your county councilor after this. It's a legal matter, this council wouldn't be able to address your question.
Okay, I just came here to find out what can I do.
See Mr. Crane afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Linda Willis.
My name is Linda Willis, and I am a St. Louis County resident. I'm also a retiree from St. Louis County government, after working 20 years with the Human Service Department, the county older resident programs. I'm here today to talk about seniors count program, and currently I work for the Mid East Area Agency on Aging. I am the senior services administrator for the University City Senior Center, where seniors come in, we bus them in, and they get activities, a hot meal, and learn more about information regarding older adults. The Mid East Area Agency on Aging covers a multitude of aging services, adult daycare services, family caregiver services, in-home services, budsmen services, and we also cover the Meals on Wheels program, and this is what I want to talk with you about. The Meals on Wheels program in University City covers Page Dale, Clayton, Vanita Park, Vanita Terrace, Wellston, and Olivette. And we have, we just recently changed from delivering one hot meal every day to one frozen meal once a week, with five meals in the box. And that's because of the budgetary problems that we're undergoing now, and so, or a lot of other aging agencies, they're being faced with budget constraints. So the problem is that we need funding in order to get back into increasing the budget for the funding for the seniors. The Meals on Wheels program is not just for low-income adults, there are children of older adults that live out of town, that wish to have a meal for their parents. Sometimes they work all day, and they don't have the time to prepare the food for their parents. Sometimes an adult might have a fall, an injury, surgery, and they're not able to get food on their own. Some of them don't drive anymore, they need help with transportation, or they need someone to bring them food. I do have one individual who is in a wheelchair, and we deliver to her once a meal, once a week, the frozen meals. She can't reach the freezer, so we put a meal down at the bottom of the refrigerator, and she eats those five meals, and when we come back the next week, then she gets another five meals. My point is that funding is very much needed in the aging industry, and also I believe that seniors count will assist us in helping us continue our mission in helping people age in home housing. Thank you very much for your time, I'd like to thank you for your consideration, the seniors count legislation, and I'd also like to give a personal thank you to Mr. Sam Page for his sponsorship of this legislation.
Thank you, Linda.
Next speaker is Mary Fox.
My name is Dr. Mary Fox, and I am the chief medical officer of the Visiting Nurse Association of Greater St. Louis. I've been a family physician, living and working in St. Louis County for nearly 30 years. The Visiting Nurse Association of Greater St. Louis has been serving this area for more than 100 years, and is a local nonprofit, community-based, independent organization. Throughout its history, the VNA has taken health care into the community and into people's homes. From its beginnings in providing immunizations to children, through to our current care for patients facing serious illnesses and life-ending illnesses, our mission has always been to bring health care to people where they live. Because we are committed to caring for older people at home, the VNA is very familiar with a tremendous need for expansion of services to seniors. At a recent meeting with a diverse group of our community partners, which included doctors, nurses, senior living communities, et cetera, we discussed unmet needs for the aging population. These needs include dependable, affordable, easily accessible transportation, access to medical care in the home for those with limited transportation and serious illnesses, caregiver support, helpers in the home, including health aides and handymen, food delivery services, and access to social services and other education to better inform patients and families about the resources available to them. Such programs will greatly improve the quality of life for seniors living at home, and funding is essential. The population in St. Louis County is aging rapidly, and many of us are already, or will become very soon, seniors. Unless we find innovative ways to fill it, we are facing a huge gap in caring for the elderly at home. The Seniors Count Initiative supports just such programs, and will play a critical role in meeting these needs in our community, using monies from a small annual tax, and I do mean small, $10 a year. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and for your thoughtful consideration of this legislation, and special thanks to Dr. Sam Page for his visionary support of Seniors Count Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fox.
Next speaker is Wilma Schmitz.
I'm Wilma Schmitz, and I'm a resident of Olivette. I'm here in support, as well, of the Senior Count Initiative, and Dr. Page, thank you very much for initiating and sponsoring this legislation. I'm here as a advocate for seniors. I wear many hats. I'm a daughter of an 85-year-old independent living woman in Vanita Terrace. I'm also the wife of a 70-year-old post-polio survivor. He has post-polio now, and he is confined to a wheelchair after being a very active person, including mountain climbing and bike riding. I'm also a geriatric care manager, so I work with families throughout the country, especially here in St. Louis, who want to have their parents stay as independent as possible. We have a gap in services for older adults in the country, and especially St. Louis County. Years ago, there were senior centers that could offer home-delivered meals and hot meals, and now we are reduced, have a reduced number. But I'm here to really talk about respite. Right now, there is no funding for family members that need to have a break when you're caring for someone 24 hours a day. And one story in particular that I would like to share with you is a story that happened several years ago. A gentleman was taking care of his wife. He did not have any children, so it was just he and his wife, and she had dementia. He was at his wit's end, he didn't have a break. So one day, he killed her, he shot her, because he didn't want her to be a burden anymore. And then he turned, and he killed himself. Had there been respite available for him, also for behavioral health medicine, to help this gentleman, that could have been avoided. That is what seniors count can help with. I urge everyone to get involved. When you see a senior, know that there's someone that may need help, and you're the ones that can help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wilma.
Next speaker is Adrian Corona.
Adrian Corona, 100 South Central. Recent article by the St. Louis Post Dispatch outlined a state center's plan to increase compensation for correctional officers. The plan hit to deal with hazard pay due to the inherent risk corrections officers face every day. Now, we are aware that the efforts of these politicians are solely for state employees, but what we'd like to focus on today is that now the entire state is starting to realize that this is an industry that needs to be safeguarded. The reasons they stated for the increase are the same arguments we have been making. Higher wages would mean less turnover, we've currently lost 15 employees this year so far, which of course would mean less overtime. We're currently at $222,000 in overtime. That's 112 over what we've been allowed, which is 109. Also dead time, meaning, with dead time meaning the training of new officers, which also adds to the number of overtime hours. That along with the rise in morale and the decline of overworked staff would make our jail a more attractive place and safer place to work. With the help of the budgeting department, we have obtained our goal number for the plan we presented to the council in our meeting in February. A 15% raise for correctional staff would amount to $1.4 million. This will put our hourly wage right between the City Justice Center and the St. Charles County Jail. Now, we understand that any additional money added to the budget is tough pill to swallow during these times, but for a department who is advertised with credentials we are, and for a department that has withstood an eight-year wage freeze, with the exception of the 3%, it seems more than fair. Over the next few months leading up to the budget proposal time, we will continue to strengthen our case for this initial wage increase, and perhaps working in cooperation with the council and our own department, come up with ways to obtain the necessary funds, or at least cut into the total cost. Other agencies are taking steps, and have taken steps, to solidify their Justice Services Department, and now we, it's time for St. Louis County to follow suit. We need to address this issue now before we are put in a critical situation that we will not be able to recover from. With all that being said, we'd like to thank the council for its time, and we would like to ask if we could be allowed to leave, as we have another meeting scheduled tonight that might help us find the necessary appropriations to achieve our funding goal.
No problem. Thanks, Adrian. No problem.
Next speaker is Nancy Sacker.
I appreciate the chance to address this council. I've been in St. Louis County for 62 years, mostly in the Clayton, U-City area, and, but I am from Kansas City to begin with. What I'm, I've been very disappointed in what has happened to me. For the last four or five days, I've been trying to get the information on what the seniors count bill actually says. I've tried Dr. Page, I've tried my own councilperson, Mr. Dolan, and I've tried Mr. Stanger. None of them have called me back, none. I have talked to Ms. Willis, who was just here, and I talked to Robin Frankel, and I spoke to Ed Albert at the Joyce Family and Children's Service. I would like to know what the bill says. All these people seem to know, but I can't find out. Is it possible for somebody to read it to me?
Well, we won't read it here to you, but we can get you a copy of it.
That's very good. Today?
We have, we can get you a copy.
I was told that the bill hadn't been written.
My assistant did contact you, at least that's what I was told.
I can't see who you are.
I'm your councilman, Pat Dolan, and I, and did you not talk to my assistant?
Yes, several times, but I wanted to speak to you.
I understand, and I apologize that I didn't get back to you, but I don't know that I could have told you anything different than he did, but I'd be happy to talk to you. But he did tell me that you had a conversation, that he explained to you about the senior count initiative.
Well, I've been, I know that the name of it is senior count.
It is a vote, you do have a chance to vote on it, if it's sent to the ballot.
Ma'am, we'll get you, we'll have a copy for you here this evening.
All right. In addition, I want to say, what I was told about the bill was that it was very vague, that it just asks for the money, and says it'll be in a fund for seniors, that the need is great. It does not say, according to what I was told, this may not be true, that the bill says, and you can please feel free to say no to me, that it includes transportation, Alzheimer's care, home health care, home cleaning care, food, like whatever it is, Meals on Wheels. Are all of these things included, and if so, why aren't they in the bill?
Number one, ma'am, I would never tell you no. Okay? I would never tell you no, ma'am. But we can give you a synopsis of what actually is in the bill, so if you'd be patient.
There's the bill.
Can you give it to her?
Give her the copy of the bill.
General, give it to Jim.
And if you, Nancy, if you want to take a look, and then if you have any other questions, feel free to call any one of us.
Well, I'll have to take it home and have some.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean. Take it with you, and decipher it, and take a look at it, and if you have any other questions regarding it, feel free to call any one of us, and we can answer some of your questions.
Well, we have had conversations, so we will do that again if there's questions.
Well, I'd like to say one thing about it.
Actually, you're.
I had been told that Missouri was a state that wanted people to stay in their homes, and I've been assured that that's true, from the assistance to the various council members that I called. I think this hurts almost everybody I know, it certainly hurts me.
Okay.
I not only own a house, but I own a vacant lot next to my house.
Okay.
Almost everybody I know is in a condo or a house, and they would have to pay this tax. Property tax is extremely upsetting.
It will be voted on by the people of St. Louis County, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you for showing up.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. It was interesting to hear County Executive Stanger on the radio this afternoon, acting as if he has nothing to do with the St. Louis County Election Board. For all practical purposes, Director of Elections Eric Fay was his appointment. Similarly, the previous director was Charlie Dooley's appointment, though the governor does the actual appointing. On this evening's agenda is $1.3 million more for the soccer fields, a questionable expenditure, given the many unmet needs in St. Louis County. Of course, Mr. Chairman, this is your pet project. In August, North County voters will get to decide whether they want to make a change in who their county council member is. They might be ready for a change, especially with $30 million going for soccer fields. Also on the agenda is a 5-cent property tax increase for senior services. There are many problems with this proposal. First of all, it would hurt the very people that claims it would help. In recent times, there have been many senior citizens who have complained about the property tax bills, especially after reassessment. I remember one lady from South County who addressed the council. She was 72, and said she was the youngest person in her subdivision. She said property taxes were threatening to drive them out of their homes. I've not heard of many seniors complaining about a lack of services, but they are certainly hurt from the many taxes that have been piled on them and other St. Louis County taxpayers in recent years. In particular, the sales tax has increased quite a bit. After today's sewer bills, well, no doubt, will be going even higher. This is not a well-thought-out proposal. No one has said what senior services are currently being provided, and which ones are needed. It's a case of let's raise some tax dollars, and then see how to spend it. Not a good way to do business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Bonnie Hall.
My name is Bonnie Hall, and I'm a resident on Chisler Road, and I wanted to address the development that's before you. The developer has done everything he can to work with the neighbors in the neighborhood, including changing the entrance, adding the additional landscaping and trees to buffer the property that backs up to the, where the development is going to be. And he's gone out of his way to take on extra things that would help to make them more content. Also, he's willing to pay half a million dollars for the new sewer system to be installed that's needed, not just for the development, but for Tammy Kay, which is the development that backs up to our development, and they are overloaded, their capacity in their sewer. So there have been a lot of good efforts, but most importantly, I think there are some really good benefits that come along with this development for St. Louis County. I'd like to share the benefits for the community. The houses will create $15,000, $1 million of new tax revenue for the Lindbergh School District. There's also going to be 10,000-plus hours for the labor community, both of these which is really strong, and we feel is going to be good for St. Louis County, not just for the small windows. I would feel that the value of these benefits, and that what the development offers, is an opportunity that will benefit the constituents in the area, I'm sorry, I have trouble saying that word, and I apologize, and also for St. Louis County on the whole. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening, and I just wanted you to realize that there are so many benefits, and there are upsides to this situation, and the efforts are there to try and maintain a semblance of peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Final speaker this evening is Darlene Johnson.
My name is Darlene Johnson, and I live on Bon Place. I am one of the owners of the property on Chisler Road that Mrs. Hall had alluded to. Our plot of land is just shy of 16 acres. We had had a meeting just before with Councilwoman Wassinger, and she had encouraged us to kind of put a face to the name, as it were. My family has been on the property for almost 100 years now, and my father passed away a few years ago. Necessitating the sale of our property, we, all of the owners, which amounts to four couples and different plots of land that make up the 21-acre proposed development, 22-acre actually, are in a position where we really can't maintain that on a property anymore. We would very much like to sell it and be able to just go to maybe a little bit simpler and less demanding lifestyle. I know that there has been a lot of opposition to the fact that they would like to put a development, the Pulte Group, in place of that 22 acres. We feel, as Mrs. Hall had mentioned, there's a lot of benefits to be gained by using the property in that manner. When my father owned the 16 acres, they were doing truck farming, and that's not feasible for our family at this point in time. We would hope that with your kind consideration, it would become a possibility to sell the property as a potential subdivision, and that the benefits could help to ensure some revenue for the county and the various projects. We're in the Lindbergh School District, we know that there's been a lot of expansion there, but they're very much always in need of new buildings and new teachers. We would like to propose that some of the tax revenues certainly would go in that direction, and certainly would be a help just by virtue of the fact that we have folks that are being employed through the Labor Council and the various trades. Obviously, a development like that would ensure increased jobs also. We feel that there's much to be gained, and we hope that you will seriously consider the approval of the proposal, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Darlene.
Chairman, could I make a motion, a second? Due to the large number of polls and the polling places today that experienced the ballot shortages.
Can you bring that under new business?
Okay.
We're going to do introduction of bills, and then you can bring it under new business.
Okay, sure. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Introduction of bills.
Bill number seventy-three. Introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a donation of up to one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars from the Saint Louis Rams for a domestic violence volunteer appreciation event, appropriating the donation for the court of said event. Bill number seventy-four. Introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Killian Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the West Fortson Avenue Great Streets Project, AR-1665. Bill number seventy-five. Introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Food Corp. LLC for concessions and vending machine operations at the North County Recreation Complex. Bill number seventy-six. Introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with House Coast Ship Incorporated for concessions and vending machine operations at St. Vincent Community Center. Bill number seventy-seven. Introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the village of Marlboro, Missouri, to provision by Saint Louis County of court and ordinance prosecution services. Bill number seventy-eight. Introduced by Councilmembers Page and O'Leary, an ordinance amending Title XII, Saint Louis County revised ordinance since nineteen-seventy-four, amended traffic code by enacting and adding two new provisions to Schedule VI. Bill number seventy-nine. Introduced by Councilmember Carter, an ordinance authorizing Saint Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, MHBK Leasing and Finance/Bungie North America Incorporated Project, Series 2016, in a principal amount not to exceed fifty-seven million dollars, and its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Bungie North America Incorporated Project, Series 2016, in a principal amount not to exceed thirteen million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive and director of administration to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Bill number eighty. Introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one as amended by repealing and reenacting Section III pertaining to PC-12-09 Caribes Investments LLC. Bill number eighty-one. Introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight as amended by repealing and reenacting Section II pertaining to PC-10-14 Moore Mill LLC. Bill number eighty-two. Introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance amending Saint Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the RF-3 Residence District and the C-1 Neighborhood Business District as provided herein, PC-06-16 Bark Inland. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number eight. Introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Oh, please, and that'll be the order.
Bill number seventy-one. Introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, Bill number seventy-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number seventy-two is perfected. Or seventy-one? No, seventy-two.
Number seventy-two?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Seventy-one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't know.
So we need to do second for Bill number seventy-one. Second for seventy-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number seventy-one. Bill number seventy-one is...
No.
Wait a minute. Aye.
Would you like a roll call vote on that, Mr. Chair?
I don't think we need a roll call vote. Let's start over with the, read it again, please.
Bill number seventy-one. Introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, Bill number seventy-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number seventy-one is perfected.
Bill number seventy-two. Introduced by Councilmembers Page, O'Meara, Dolan, and O'Leary.
I move to perfect, Bill number seventy-two.
Second, and I'd like to speak to it if the chairman would oblige.
Sure.
We've heard from advocates from our senior citizens, and we've heard from senior citizens themselves, and I think we need to listen. They have legitimate concerns about funding for respite services, for Meals on Wheels, for in-home services. And I believe our seniors deserve a vote by St. Louis County voters on how these services will be funded. And that's why I sponsored the bill, and I'm voting for it.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number seventy-two is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number one-sixteen. Introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move to hold.
It's the order.
Bill number sixty-six. Introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
Move for final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number sixty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-six is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-seven. Introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number sixty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-eight. Introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, Bill number sixty-eight.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number sixty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number sixty-nine. Introduced by Councilmembers O'Meara, Page, and Harder.
Move for final...
Final passage, Bill number sixty-nine.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number sixty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill number sixty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number seventy. Introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of Bill number seventy.
Second.